No, we have the flat chairs.
You can tell me outside waiting.
Okay, we're going live. All right, good evening, everyone. It's seven o'clock, so we're going to call this public hearing to order. It's going to be a little bit different than what you would expect if you were sitting in an audience. There is a live chat bar on the side that you can type in a question if you would like. We will do the best we can to answer everybody's questions. You can also send questions to the supervisor at Hamlin NY account. I will be checking those during the hearing. So if any other questions come in, we can answer those live for you. Otherwise, it's going to be a presentation by JP Shep from MRB, our town engineer. What you should see in front of you right now is the boundary map for the project. It shows the entire lake shore from the east border of the Hamlin Beach State Park to the east border of the town of Hamlin, everything north of the Parkway. So that said, I'd like to call this public hearing to order. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Baxter.
Here.
Vocal. One here.
Excused.
Her what?
Here.
Yeah, here.
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 Here. So four out of five board members are here. We also have Betty Jo Gronaldar, our town clerk, and JP Shep from MRB to do a presentation. Everybody should have received a mailing. If you did not, we will make sure that you have the information that has the breakdown of the costs involved. If you didn't get in touch with us in the next day or two, we'll get one out to you in the mail. I'm going to turn this over to JP to let everybody know what we're up against and what we're looking at, and we'll go from there.
Okay, folks. So what you're seeing in front of you is the legal boundary map and description. And as Eric mentioned, we're going from, including the Brockport Water Plant, all the way over to the Parma Town Line. Everything north of the Parkway. There's approximately 381 parcels in the district. The selected project is a grinder, low pressure grinder pump, low pressure sewer system. Basically, every household in the district will receive a grinder pump that will be operating and maintained by the town. Those will all be pumped to a common forest main, to a main lift station located somewhere near Walker Lake Ontario Road, where all the sewage from the district will be pumped up to the Monroe County Pure Waters trunk sewer for treatment at the Northwest Quadrant Treatment Plant. The total project cost is $7.9 million. Fortunately, there was a grant from the Resiliency and Economic Development Initiative that covers 95% of the cost. That's 7.5 million in grant. So the district is only paying that last remainder of about roughly $400,000. We're anticipating to, for paying that off, there will be a bond issued and dividing up that bond amongst all the users. It'll be a 30-year bond. We're estimating it at about $75.21 per year, per household or per ordinary single residential home. Vacant properties will be paying half that, about $37, around $37. Additional costs, there's an operation and maintenance fee for the town to operate and maintain the system. That's about $32 per year. There is a disposal fee to Monroe County Pure Waters for the treatment of the sewage. Based upon an average household that treats about 60,000 uses about 60,000 gallons per year, that equates to about $87.60. Average operation, each home's going to be connected to these grinders and you're going to be paying for the electric to run them. We estimate about $3 per month, so that's about $32 or $36 per year. And adding those up, the total annual cost for an average user that's hooked on will be about $31 or $231 per year. I should note that if you were at the informational meetings we had at St. John's before the shutdown, that presentation is available on the town's website if you want to view that. The boundary map and description and engineering report will be avail, are available at the town hall for folks to review if they so wish. So the next step here is the town will be, town board will be forming the district by their action. The project will be subject to a 30-day permissive referendum after they propose the district formation. It would only take 5% of the eligible owners, which is basically the property owners, could bring it to a vote if they so chose, and then it would go to a vote. If we don't get that 5% coming forward to vote on it, it would just, the town would just move ahead and the district would be formed and only be moving forward. A couple of things that will be the property owner's responsibilities will be signing an easement because the town's going to operate and maintain the grinder at every house. We're going to need access for construction and we're going to need access for long-term maintenance. So we're going to be seeking an easement for every property that has a grinder pump. The property owner will be responsible for connection of the lateral that presently goes to your septic system and divert that into the grinder pump and then making the electric connection to the alarm panel to power each of the grinder stations. There's a one-time fee to establish a an account with Monroe County Pure Waters of about $250. That's just a one-time fee. And then you'll be responsible for just that electric charge after that. The town will be maintaining all over the grinder pumps, all of the piping from the grinder pumps to the main lift station and then main lift station and everything else. So that's the gist of the project. And I guess we're open for questions and comments?
Yes, yeah, we are open for questions and comments. If you're watching this on the YouTube channel, you can type in in the chat bar on the side to ask us a question or, as I said before, send a question to supervisor@hamlinny.org and I'm standing here waiting for them, so we'll answer them as they come in. I did get a couple of questions ahead of time that might answer a bunch of these. This is from Julie Madre, I believe it is. Questions regarding any deadlines missed to COVID shutdowns, is the project on track? Timeline to completion? Projected start date? Could the money ever be made unavailable? Is there an actual vote and when is it? We just answered the part about the vote. That will only happen if it's forced to be voted upon. What we said, and I've been saying all along, this will most likely never be any cheaper than it is today. The amount of money, I have never, ever, and JP, you can probably confirm this. I've been doing districts for many, many years. Probably 25 years now, and I've never seen a district that has come in this inexpensively, really. $75 per year debt service is really a gift to everybody. We are, the project is on track. The money, it has, we've checked a couple of times, several times actually, more than a couple. I just talked to the state actually last week. The money is available and will be available. It's already been appropriated so that it's supposedly not going anywhere. And I let you, JP, you can address the timeline to completion and the projected start date.
We're presently working on the mapping and survey work. So that's on schedule. We plan to have the plans. We're going to work on those for the remainder of the summer and fall and then work on getting our permits and approvals throughout the early winter. We anticipate letting the project out to bid in the late winter and construction should begin springtime of 2021. We anticipate the construction will carry through to the, through the end of 2021 and we hope to be able to have people starting to hook up toward the end of next year. And then there will probably be some final cleanup and restoration items that'll be done in the spring of 2022.
Okay, we had another question. It came in from Melanie Zwick. This is more of a general question that goes to the overall design of the project. She resides at 6536 Shore Acres Drive. Her question is, rather than installing grinders at every hookup, why not have a grinder or two for every neighborhood? For example, on Shore Acres Drive, why not have a large grinder at the bottom of the road or just a couple? It seems so many grinders would be, would be set up for greater potential of failures with many moving parts. When there are multiple failures, there will be time-consuming repair work, et cetera, et cetera. Grinders of the same model, same age will likely have problems around the same time. Smaller number of grinders would be easier and much less expensive to maintain. I'll let you address that one.
We propose one grinder per household. Main reason being they need to be, there's electric usage, it'll be from the private side. So you could have, you'd have to somehow figure out how to split the electrical charges that will be going on one person's meter if you had shared grinders. Usage just varies wildly. There's some places that are seasonal. There's some places that are year-round. So having each individual operate, however they need to demand is the most fair way to do it. Another consideration is, you know, their age, when they're in need of replacement is a function of how much wear and tear they get, not just merely the age. So we anticipate some are going to go sooner than others. In general, the tank itself, the grinder station should last much, much longer. The biggest maintenance item will be the pump themselves. These are modular style pump station where literally you take the lid off, make a few fastening connections and the whole pump core comes out. The town's going to have spare pump cores available on the shelf at the sewer department and it's a pretty quick and easy repair to pull that pump out and replace it. So we've used this model in several other locations and it's, it's it's been very successful and equitable for everybody.
Okay, I've got a couple of questions that are coming in while we're talking. One from Heather Murphy. I'm not sure what her address is, but must live down by the lake somewhere. Yes, you will have to have your septic tank filled. That can vary in cost. I mean, and some of it you may be able to do yourselves. Shouldn't be very expensive seeing it's fairly cheap. And once that's done, it's done. The other question you had was the water, is the water debt service paid off? Well, that kind of depends on where you live. I'm not sure what road you live on down there. West Atoma has been paid for many years ago. Sandy Shore, Shore Acres, Newco, all may have a little bit of time left, but not a lot. So depending where you live, there's still going to be some debt service involved. Curry Ladue asked about location of grinders. Do you get to pick where the location is? Generally speaking, you'll have a little bit of leeway, but they want them, the health department wants them fairly close to the house, close to a driveway, accessible so that we can repair them if there is ever an issue. But, and you need to have them close to the lateral that exits your house. It goes to your septic system at this point for ease of hookup. So there will be a little bit of leeway, but not a ton. I also got a question, email from Dave Smith on Sandy Shore. Wanted to know if there was a change from having to vote on this in the first place to having the district set up for the residents. It's, you can do it both ways. One of the troubles with if you have a large district with this many people is a vote is expensive to have it happen. And to have a vote, generally you have a series of petitions that go through and if you don't get enough signatures, then it has to go to the vote. And it's a costly and time-consuming process and with people coming and going in these days, especially under the circumstances we've had for the last four months, we felt that the town board should go ahead and inform the district. We haven't had any major negative feedback from most people. It's most everybody that I've heard from has been positive about having this project go forward. So I felt comfortable with going with that option and then allowing for the 5% to basically call it into question and enforce the vote. You know, we are certainly hoping that that doesn't happen because this is a very good project for the lake. And this is one of those, maybe not once in a lifetime, but I'm going to say once in a really long time situations where you're basically getting this done for very, very little money. There is a little bit of cost upfront, but that's any district water or sewer, there's going to be an upfront cost. And that's a one-time deal and then it's done. And then the town takes care of it for in perpetuity. And it's a pretty, pretty low cost. If you're talking about $230 a year, that's roughly, what, $20 a month? To have sewers, so that's, that's really going to be probably your absolute cheapest utility. So that's where we are with that. That's why we went with that option. Another question was, are there any properties on the lake that are excluded? No, there isn't, not within that boundary map. Everyone is included from, from the east boundary of Hamlin Beach State Park to the east boundary of the town of Hamlin, north of the Parkway, everybody is included in the district. So there is, nobody has to opt in to, to take part in the district. Other questions coming in? Heather Murphy writes, she's at Shore Acres. I believe Heather, that you may have a little bit of time left on there. Without looking it up, I couldn't, can't tell you for certain, but I know that that district has been in for a while now, so you're probably getting down toward the tail end of it. Trying to remember when we put that in. It's been 20-plus years now.
Yeah, I believe that was, we started as town engineer in 92 and that was maybe one of the early ones.
Yes, yeah, that's what I was trying to think.
So we're probably in the 26, 20.
So you're right at the tail end of the bond issue at this point, so. So that's, that's where we are with that. Let's see, Daniel Ingham writes, the grinders in Hamlin Beach, I assume the state park, smell of sewage, will these?
So the answer is no, these are, these are vented. There shouldn't be, shouldn't be any major orders with these at all. They're normally vented right to your, through your plumbing stack that you have now. So it shouldn't be any different.
All right, Mark Bessel asks, will there be any construction this fall? Maybe the line to the sewer main?
Actually getting our permits and approvals. And no, I don't anticipate any work being ready this fall. Probably not until springtime.
Mike Lee?
Any idea where it will make the most sense to start the project as far as which street?
Okay, so the question is, where would we start the project? And who will get service first, I think, is where we're driving at. Well, we can, no one can get served until we have the main lift station and it pumps up to the county trunk sewer. So that work will likely be done first and that means somewhere in the vicinity of Walker Lake Ontario Road will be where things will start to spider out. And we'll probably be, let the contractor choose where they propose, but properties near Walker Lake Ontario Road are probably going to be the first ones to be available for tie-in. And then it'll extend out to the east and west extremes from there.
Okay, I've got questions from Councilperson Baxter. If the grinder pump location needs to be moved due to future construction, who is responsible to move the grinder pump? That would be the town, it'll be their ownership. The town would work in conjunction with the homeowner for the new location, wherever it would be. The homeowner would be responsible for relocation of their lateral to meet that location of the grinder pump. I mean, obviously you need to be within your own property lines and so forth, but I'm, you know, the town would work with the homeowner. What changes to the easement would be required? Would probably be along the same lines. If you move the location of the pump to the, an area that's going to be outside of the original easement, new easement will have to be drawn up and recorded with the town, or the, excuse me, the county clerk's office with any of the other easements. And can we use our old sandbags to fill the septic tank? I would defer to you, I would assume so, it's filled.
Yeah, it's just as long as it's filled.
So.
The idea is just so that it doesn't in the future create a, a safety hazard by collapsing, so.
Barbara Quinn asks, where will grinder pumps be placed on a property? Maybe you can explain that a little better than I can.
So the location, we're going to, we're going to work with every property owner, identify where your, where your lateral line leaves your house now and goes towards your, your septic tank. So generally it would, the easiest, most inexpensive way to connect would be somewhere in that location between your septic tank and where the lateral leads the house. But if someone wants to change that and replumb it to a different location, we're going to work with the property owners on where they're placed as best we can. And, you know, back to that previous question. Yeah, we'll work, you know, if you're planning on an addition, we're going to work with the property owners to find the most logical location. And remember, the property owners can be responsible for that, that connection to the grinder station, so that's why we're going to work with you and do it wherever you wanted. As much as can be done practically.
We had a question about seasonal cottages that are shut down and winterized. Would there be any special things that the owner would need to do with respect to the grinders? No, not really. They're going to be down below the frost line as it is. We, during the informational meeting, the, the, one of the pump manufacturers kind of addressed this. Their recommendation is to run through quite a few, you know, maybe 10, 12 gallons of water, flush a few times to get the effluent cleaned out so it's clear water sitting in there over the winter time, but otherwise it's below the frost level. And whatever else you would normally do to winterize your cottage is, would be the same protocol, you know, drain pipes, traps, et cetera. Otherwise, no, there's nothing special you need to do with that. Do the, does the connecting pipes have to be a certain distance away from our water lines and old capped wells?
The code is, is there should be 10 feet separation between the water lines and the sewer lines. We know that it's not always practical, given some of the very small lots there. So to the best extent we can keep them separated 10 feet, we'll try and do that, but there, there are just limitations on many of the properties there that, that don't give us a lot of opportunities to do those sorts of things.
We had a question, what is the size of the lateral connection at the grinder pump?
Generally, there should be a four-inch lateral presently leaving your, your house that goes to the septic. If you have something different, you know, you can match up with it. But generally, four inches is the most, is the, is the common size for the gravity lateral. The line leaving the pump will be an inch and a quarter for each house and then they'll all join up to progressively larger pumps as more and more houses are tied together.
Oh, okay, I apologize. Missed one from Mark Bessel, will there be a published construction schedule?
Well, in a sense, we, the presentation that's available on the, on the town's website has our tentative schedule that we discussed a little while ago. If something changes, I think we'd probably update the website.
Yeah, yeah, we, you know, as, as construction gets close to beginning, we will definitely be publishing the construction schedule as best we can. That does tend to change and we don't dictate means and methods to the contractors. So once they're awarded the job, they will do it the way they see fit to meet the specs of the job, so. But they generally will have a layout of their construction schedule, so. And usually that doesn't vary too much unless something major happens, but it usually goes forward in a linear fashion that they've laid out because they want to get in and out in the most expeditious fashion, way they can, expeditious way they can and most efficient way, so. Yes, we will definitely publish that.
Right, and then we, you know, we all cross our fingers that we don't see another year like 2017 or 2019. We're doing, we're finishing up a similar project in Port Bay and they had portions that were underwater quite late last year that the contractor had to wait out until the water drained away and complete those areas, but as the supervisor said, in the springtime, after we have our contractor, we'll, we'll have a schedule and present it as best we can.
And will both brown water and gray water be fed to the grinder? Yes. Toilets, sanitary situation and/or sinks, washing machines, laundry, all that gray water will also go through. It's all included.
The only, only thing you can't direct to the grinder would be
Storm.
Some pumps, roof leaders, gutters. But yeah, any, any ordinary sewage can go to the grinder station.
Let's see. When might we expect the design engineers to be at our property to review the details of a specific site?
As we get our mapping together throughout the summer here, we'll be making outreach to property owners and start looking at where your existing facilities are. We'll probably, because of the size of the district and number of properties, what we found on some similar projects is it'll probably take a combination of methods to get together with you folks. We'll initially start with, with a mailing and work with, you know, prints of each property and hopefully get some of that stuff done by mail. And then I'm sure we'll be out, we'll set up some days when we're going to be setting up field meetings if the mailing method doesn't work. And thirdly, we've found, you know, certain people just don't And thirdly, we've found, uh, you know, certain people just don't respond. It got to the point where, uh, we've put out stakes on the front door or front stoop and asked people to put a stake in where you want us to locate the grinder. So, it'll be a combination of methods, but certainly everyone will be, uh, an outreach will be made by mail for certain, and then we'll pick up after that.
Uh, let's see. Well, a couple of questions we've got are, are kind of, uh, very specific to the individual person, and they, they will need to be addressed individually. Uh, one is if you have a second structure on the property and want, need a second grinder as an option to purchase or maintain a second grinder on your own. Uh, you know, we, that, that would be an individual look at, we'd have to see what, what the property is, how it's set up, how many septic systems you have now, i- is the property subdivided, a lot, a lot of questions involved in that. Um, I'm not gonna say that it's not an option, but we, we would need to look at that individually. Uh, the other individual type question was somebody had a vacant lot on the south side of Tucker Lane, and can they build there after the line goes through? Uh, that would be a question for planning zoning, et cetera. It's not something that is gonna be involved in the district, and that would be, have to be addressed well after the district is completed, because right now, we can't do that, you can't build on the south side, it's Tucker Road. So it's kind of a, a question for the future.
I can just add a, a little bit to that. We do anticipate that, you know, once this sewer system is available, there's vacant lots that, uh, may become, uh, easier to build on now, because you won't have the septic systems and the environmental issues. So, we've anticipated that some, some of the vacant lots will be, uh, more develop or, or easier to develop afterwards. And we factored in some additional capacity, um, for that type of development on the system.
Um, do we know where the main line will be laid on the impacted streets?
Uh, that's, that's hard to say. Um, as I mentioned before, we need to be ten feet separated between water mains and the sewer lines. So, the short answer is probably on the opposite side of the road of where your water lines are. Um, that's gonna be the general rule of thumb, but until I have all the mapping and see where any other underground, uh, things are, I can't say for certain until we have all our mapping and, and that work done to, uh, pick that final location.
Another basically construction-related question that's probably still up in the design phase is, how will Sandy Shore properties such as Brockport Yacht Club bordering Sandy Creek be connected to the main line?
So that, uh, we are gonna have to bore under Sandy Creek. So there will be lines on each side connecting and boring under Sandy Creek. So, yep, we, we won't know for certain where that's gonna be, but every, every property with, um, a house, we'll be getting a grinder pump, and we're gonna tie them all together.
Uh, do we have to tie into the sewer district? What will be our cost to hook up to the main? If we opt out, do we still pay fees?
So the only fee, if you, if you have a house on a single lot and you don't connect, would, you'd be responsible for the debt service is seventy-five dollars roughly per year. And if you come in later, uh, there'll be a much heftier, uh, tie-in fee, because then the town will have to come back after the contractor's pulled out and install the grinder pump station and install the lateral. So it'll be more expensive to tie in later than it would be to tie in now, but certainly, I, I know there's people that have engineered septic systems that are probably functioning well, and they don't care to invest more, so. That's, we understand that, and if that's how you, what you choose to do, that, that's acceptable.
The only thing that I, I would do is to follow up on that question, would be to say that, as, as I said at the beginning, th- this is probably, no, no probably, this will be the cheapest time that you can actually do this. There, there will never be a cheaper time to do this, as far as fees and hookups and so forth. And if you ever intend, if this project continues to go forward, which we, we really believe it will, i- i- if you ever intend to refinance your house or sell your house, if there's a public utility out front, uh, the banks, as far as mortgages go, somebody will have to pay to have that hooked up. So, it's, it's, this is the time to do it. I know some people don't like to think that way, everything works fine as JP said, but this may be the time to do a one-time deal and get it done. Uh, you're also, everything is also under construction, so, you know, tear it all up once, and then you're done with it once, once it's restored, instead of maybe going back at another time. Uh, question about driveways. How, how are they gonna go through the driveways? Are they going to be torn up is the quote question?
Well, that, that, there's two answers to that. One, um, depends on which side of the road you're on and where we put our, our main, main collection lines. Uh, two, we're gonna let the contractor have the option of open cutting and then restoring the driveways. Uh, or they may use a trenchless technology like directional drilling and drill under obstructions. Um, we are gonna give them that option, and, and whoever the low bidder is, we'll do it, uh, however we can get it done most economically. In any event, if you have a, a concrete driveway, we'll restore it in concrete. If it's asphalt, it'll be restored, it'll be restored in kind, whatever is there.
Did we read Kerry's, how many houses generally get installed in a day? Trying to understand velocity of installation.
Oh, no, I didn't read that one, I did see it, but I didn't read that one, thank you.
Uh, the question about how quickly, how many of these can they get in in a day? Uh, that's really a function of the methods and means of the low bidder. Um, some, some will have large crews, multiple crews, others will have, uh, maybe one single crew. But they can get several done a day, a normal, a normal, uh, contractor. But, you know, we're gonna have contract limits on how, how fast they do get the project done, so, hard to say.
Well, one just came in from Head of Mercury. Once your unit is installed, are you good to go, or does the whole street go online at once?
Yeah, once, uh, once the line's in, uh, you, you, and you're ready to tie onto it, you can tie onto it. Each, each house will have a shut-off valve installed, so we don't need everybody tied on at the same time. Um, we can shut off a neighboring property so that you can start using the system until that, your other neighbor puts their, gets their grinder connected and ready to go. So, yeah, they can be done individually, not streets at a time.
What the, the main, the main will have to be installed initially first, and that will be installed generally with laterals with a shut-off at the yard, tested and so forth. So after that, yes, it'll be an individual, just to make sure we're clear on that, on that. Okay, I haven't seen any new questions in a, in a minute or so, I'm gonna give it a few more minutes, a couple more minutes, and then we will close the public hearing. So if you got any last questions, uh, try to get them in the chat bar or to supervisor@hamlinny.org.
Geez, uh, on the annual town operation and maintenance, that thirty-two, twenty-four figure, that's gonna cover, I just wanna be clear, that's gonna cover any future. You know, if the town has to add a half position to maintain these ten, fifteen years down the road, that's, that's what that's for.
Yeah.
That should, that should be taken care of any future.
Yeah, so the question is, is a thirty, is the town's annual fee, uh, gonna, gonna be sufficient as we move forward? That's the fee that the town charges presently, um, like any fee, like my electric fees and my water bills, and clearly the town's gonna have to adjust like anything else due to inflation and due to ca, you know, cost for pay, payrolls and these kinds of things. So, yeah, that fee won't be flat forever, that fee is, is to cover operation costs. And, yeah, all, all those kinds of things go up over time. You know, hope, hopefully in modest few percentage points per year, but, yeah, it's not a flat fee for, for, for ever.
Uh, we had a couple more questions come in. Uh, can you describe the one-time two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar fee again?
So that's what Monroe County calls their, their tap-in fee. Because they have to set up an account for each household and, uh, and get, get a billing structure set up. So that's what Monroe County's gonna charge each household for that one-time fee. That one's out of our hands.
And somebody joined late for, and wanted the timeline quickly reiterated?
Okay, basically, we're, uh, you know, hope to form the district here shortly. Uh, we're working on the mapping work, and the design will be started up in the summer here. And we hope to get the, get it out for permits and approvals in the fall and be ready to bid it in the, uh, winter. And then initiate construction in the spring of 2021. Construction will carry through pretty much all of 2021. We hope by the end of 2021, uh, folks can start connecting. And then we expect that there'll be some cleanup work to do in, uh, the spring of 2022.
Okay, question is, debt service and O and M are billed on taxes. They are on the tax bill, they will be shown as separate lines, uh, as a district cost, and they will be broken down as between debt services sewer. At the public hearings in March, there's confusion about the height of the grinder pumps. Has there been any further clarification on that?
Yeah, so we're anticipating, um, that we will be, in general, we put them, be putting them at, at ground level. Uh, if we need to elevate them, because you have a fairly low, or if you're in an area that's below the, the flood level, these units do have a watertight cover available, so we anticipate there'll be some with watertight covers. And the only caveat with those is, uh, it'll need a separate vent stack for the watertight ones. But, you know, in general, that we will be installing them at ground level.
You may have said, when will sewer district reform? And we know this is a done deal. Well, the first step was to have this public hearing. We were, we kinda held off on doing it virtually, because this is pretty clunky and a hard way to answer questions. Uh, we had hoped that the restrictions placed by the governor on large gatherings would have been lifted, but that was not the case, so we felt we needed to move ahead. Uh, the public hearing's the first step. Town board is anticipating, I am anticipating forming the district at our next town board meeting, uh, which, that will start the clock on the thirty-day, uh, recusal period for anybody that wants to have it go to a vote. And once that's done, the first meeting is in September, which will be about thirty days, we'll, would let you know whether it's a done deal or not after that meeting. Out-of-state owners, will we be, will we need to be present at any given point to make a decision on where the grinder pump grows, goes? Or for any other reason? I would anticipate if you are an out-of-state owner, you have premises there, that you must visit it occasionally or have somebody there visit it for you. Uh, when we get close to construction, I'm sure that a stake will be provided by the engineering firm, the construction company. You can just plop it in the ground and mark on it where you want the grinder pump. We'll work with everybody the best we can to get that accomplished.
And we, we will do, be doing a mailing to every property owner. So, if you are out of state, we can, we could do it by mail. We'll be sending out a, a location map for each property when we get all our mapping complete, so you could mark on a, on a drawing of your property where you wanted it.
Uh, let's see, if we have flooding again in the spring, summers we have in the past few years, will that delay the project? Um, well, obviously, it depends on how bad the flooding is, they can't work underwater, but I would anticipate if, uh, there's any kind of dry ground, they're gonna, not real dry ground, but above water, they will be able to install the systems. We have a double lot on Newco Drive, how far will grinder pump push? Or will be pump, or will pump be closer to Newco Drive?
Uh, they, they can put out over eighty pounds of pressure, eighty psi pressure. So they can pump, uh, quite a long ways. Um, several, more than several hundred feet each, so that shouldn't be a concern.
I think we got them all, did you see any other ones?
Good job, and so, for people who don't wanna tie in, I thought, so, the debt service you have on here is fifty-four, sixty?
Yeah, that's, that one's an error, the, the pre, the presentation I did.
I just got this in the mail.
Yeah, that's, so, yeah, no, the hooking, or the, the debt service, if you don't tie in, is seventy-four dollars for a house on a single property, and a vacant property will be charged about half that, about thirty-seven dollars.
And by vacant, you just mean no, well, neither?
No, yeah.
And that, that, and that cost is the, the, the estimated cost of seventy-five, twenty-one for debt service is assuming four-point-two-five percent for thirty years. Um, that makes, the, the good possibility that will change as the markets fluctuate. And when we go to bond, uh, right now, the markets are, the, the bond market is down a little bit, so, you know, if we can get this moving fairly quickly, we may be able to get it at a less interest rate, a lower interest rate, and it would actually be a, a lower number for the debt service. So that, that's, we, we, we try to pick that number, because that's a fairly conservative number, um, that you could probably get, which isn't the best number, but you could get that number to make sure that we're not saying something that's lowballing everybody, so to speak, so. Uh, I saw the thing move, so maybe, well, just said thank you for your time. Huh? No more questions? Well, seeing there's no more questions online, does the board have any more questions while we're here? Well, seeing as there's no more questions, I would take, uh, a motion to adjourn the public hearing, close the public hearing.
Our favor.
All right. So this concludes our public hearing, thank you, everybody. We appreciate you, uh, tuning in to our fledgling, first-ever online public hearing.